We call the Board of Education meeting to order if we can all stand. And tonight, I would like to remember Dr. Oates and the loss of his brother a day or two ago. That's the reason he will not be attending tonight, so we just remember him and his family, and let us pray. Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this county. We thank you for this state. We thank you for this nation. We ask that you would just continue to be with those in all the elections today until that process ends tonight, and we ask that you would just be with us and direct us and guide us as we make decisions that are important for this area. And we ask you just to be with Dr. Oates and his family during this time of bereavement. We thank you for all the things that you help us with each day. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Go, guard, attention! Car, guard, forward, march! Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ah, Pledge of Allegiance.
... of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Thank you to the West Brunswick High School of J.R.A.T.C. And the next honor of success in our schools. And here comes Amanda to tell us all about it.
Good evening, everyone. Normally, you know, during the success in our school segment, we're talking about success outside in the individual schools. But today, this month, we wanted to take a moment and recognize some success right here involving our own Board of Education and our board members. So, what I want for public record is everybody to know about the Silver Bell Award for whole board training. This is presented to you, the members of the Brunswick County Board of Education, for training excellence and commitment during the 2018-2019 NCSBA Academy Year of the North Carolina School Boards Association Academy of School Boardsmanship. So, just another example of y'all's dedication to the betterment of Brunswick County schools. And I will come present to you, Ms. Cook, with the...
Thank you. Thank all of you. Since we don't have anybody for public address, we're going to move on to the presentations. And we have Ms. Dixon with the Digital Learning Update.
Hi!
Hello!
How are you? So, it's time for our Digital Learning Update for this year, and things are really exciting. If you'll remember, we did the last one of these, I think, at the April Board meeting, maybe? Is that when that was? So, you'll remember our strategic plan, and I just highlighted the areas that are most important to instructional technology and classroom technology. That includes providing instructional support for the one-to-one initiative, providing professional development for teachers on the use of Chromebooks. And notice that 2021, it said, "Continue to funding to complete the one-to-one initiative." Okay? That becomes important because currently, we have 100% one-to-one average across the district. Now, we do have eight schools that are not quite at one-to-one. You can see those percentages in front of you, but they're all beyond 94%. So, right now, we have beyond 94% one-to-one access for all of our students across the county. This takes into consideration Chromebooks and student-use iPads. This does not count any classroom desktops. This does not count anything in the CTE arenas. This is just what students have access to in their regular classrooms for student-use devices. We do, the remainder of those schools are at least 100% or beyond. Okay? So, we have the tools now, and we're excited about that. And we're about a year ahead of schedule with that. We hope to close this out at the very latest by July 1. We'll order the remainder of these. Our professional development focus for this year, remember, we currently have five instructional technology facilitators. Three of them cover 17 schools. The other two are assigned directly with the high schools. Those are high school staff at North Brunswick and West Brunswick High School. And their focus includes classroom management techniques, integration with the content areas, rigor and relevance, goal-setting, and data analysis. Technology did a great job, Deborah Behr and her staff with Technology Services in helping us provide these, and they're also doing a fabulous job in helping us maintain these. We have had some minimal damage. It's less than 1% across the district, which is considering most damage in how we treat our phones and other things. That's to be expected. So, we're currently less than 1%, and they have a system in place that allows technicians and staff to swap those devices out immediately, so students do not lose access to those resources in the classroom. You'll notice that the student-teacher-in-Clover portal access, this data includes this year and the previous two school years. Every Chromebook that logs in, logs in through the Clover portal, whether students use applications in that or not. So, it's a good measure of how much usage we're getting day-to-day out of our devices. The purple line would be 2017-2018. The pink line would be last year, 2018-2019. And you'll notice the beginnings of that blue line far exceeds that. So, the students are logging in regularly and using devices at least for something. We're going to talk about the somethings in just a second, because we do have measurement tools for those as well. Just an example by grade level, so you can see the access by grade level and where we're getting the most grade-level access and the greatest gains in that grade-level access. Check out kindergarten, because we're really proud of our littles, right? You'll see this again in just a second. Kindergarten and first grade and second grade have by far exceeded expectations in their usage, and they're using it for amazing things. Our high schools have also done some gains. We see a drop-off as we get into the core content areas, but we're working with our high schools on how they're using those technology tools. Our K-2 badges, we talked about our kindergarteners, they actually scan in. We made it where they have a badge that allows them easy access, and their teachers love that. And you can see the increase in the usage of those badges. That pink line would be this year compared to the other two years. So, you can see the growth in that arena. We are measuring how these devices are being used, and I wanted to take a couple minutes to explain to you that measurement tool. The first thing we use is the SAMR model for technology integration, and this really looks at whether we're making wise expenditures and whether we're using devices for the most appropriate things. You'll notice that it's measured across four levels, which is substitution. The device just strictly substitutes for something else. There's no gains or improvements in what that is. Augmentation, which is sort of a substitution with a functional improvement, so kids can turn in papers faster and teachers can return them faster. That's a functional improvement. Modification allows for a significant task redesign. That's where we start seeing kids are able to do things that they really couldn't do before, and we've got some significant changes to the tasks we're asking students to do. And redefinition. And that's where we're seeing great gains, where students are using coding and creating videos of products to explain what they're learning in the classrooms, those kind of things. We're doing walkthroughs in the classrooms. I'm doing 100 walkthroughs a month, so I visit 100 classrooms every month and do a quick snapshot of how they're using technology in that moment. I have met my goal of 100 both months so far, so we're on task to keep that going. And one of the things I measure is the technology that they're using, both in the teacher and the student's hand. Where does it fall on this scale? Is it substitution all the way up to redefinition? So, that's the first thing we're looking at. The second thing we're looking at involves the rigor and relevance framework. And this is really about what tasks are we asking our students to do and how rigorous is it? The sweet spot for learning is that yellow block, which is D, that's high rigor and high relevance. Not it's hard, but it's rigorous. It asks the students to think. It's upper levels of Bloom's taxonomy, and it's relevant to the students. The other quadrants you can see move either across or up and down, the Bloom's taxonomy and that relevance scale. Again, when I visit every classroom, after I look for the SAMR model, the next thing I look for is how rigorous are the activities the kids are doing and how relevant are they? And mark it based on this scale.
What do you do with that information?
That's next. So, we're looking at that data as we go through. This is just a graph of the current data. Again, I've only visited about 200 of our 800 classrooms, about eight schools in bits and pieces. It'll take probably the full year to continue to collect this data to get to every classroom and those kind of things. But what we're measuring first is, again, that on the right-hand side of the screen as I'm looking at it, is the SAMR model. So, are they using it for substitution, modification, augmentation, those kind of things? So, really, how are the devices being used? And that's predominantly the teacher-driven piece of that. Okay? So, how is the teacher using it? The student-driven piece is the rigor and relevance piece. And you see, we do have an opportunity to increase the rigor in our classrooms. One thing I would say is that it's scaffolding. So, there are times when you have to include lower levels of Bloom's taxonomy, right? So, there are times when you're going to see... And that's where the B, that B quadrant, which is purple, means it was relevant. It just was part of that scaffolding model. We're going to continue to look to see how many redefinition and how many of those quadrant D high rigor and high relevance we get as we go through. Keep in mind, I started collecting data the first week of September, so we were talking about fresh into the school year. Okay? This will change, and these graphs actually are live. They will change as the data feeds in. I feed it into a spreadsheet that feeds these graphs live. Our next steps include continuing to collect the data via our walkthroughs and use that data to plan and design professional development. I started the school year by providing professional development to each of the high schools about how they could increase rigor with the use of technology in their classrooms and how they can personalize their learning experiences within their classrooms for their students. That's the kind of thing we will continue to develop as we continue to collect this data. We'll also work individually with the school-level administrators to set goals and set schedule support and work with them to determine what they need. Several of them have gone with me on these walkthroughs, so they could see what was going on in their classrooms. And then, we'll continue to use the data to make resource and device procurement decisions. We only buy based on good decisions. Ms. Cahill will tell you I'm sometimes brutal when it comes to expenditures, but we will continue to use that data for more things. I need to tell you, what's not included in here is the digital library. We have officially, as of today, checked out 10,000 digital library books this school year alone since August 26th and almost 23,000 total since we launched in January.
Wow. That's a lot.
So, we're excited about that. That's the quick version of this. I welcome you guys to contact me anytime you want to and to keep up with this data and to present again anytime you want me to with the updated data. Mr. Lemon, you have questions?
Well, I was thinking about, do you do exit interviews with your principal as you leave if they don't walk through with you?
I do, when I can find them. You know, principals are busy people, so I do, or else I contact them afterwards. So, we have, and I'm an English Language Arts Social Studies teacher before I was a technologist, so sometimes the conversations I have may not even, if I see something that we could do otherwise, we have that conversation as well. But I do have those conversations about great things we see in the classrooms, opportunities, and then additional professional development that I can provide or my staff can provide for the teachers.
And you talk pretty fast, so they may not catch it all.
I could do a follow-up email as well, just in case.
If they can read it their own pace. He can read him.
We have 40, 56% no technology use.
Right.
When somebody walks through.
Yep.
What am I to do?
Well, I would be the first one to tell you that it's not always the right tool at the right moment. I think we could decrease that number, but I think there are opportunities. And keep in mind, I'm in there doing snapshots, so I'm not staying for 45 minutes. I'm staying for like five and getting a feel for what's going on in the classroom and those moments. And as we repeat in multiple classrooms, as you increase the data set, it levels out. This is early, early in the data set. So, I would hesitate to make a decision, but I think that's worth watching.
It would be, I don't know if you've thought about this, but it would be natural to not have technology in use in X percent of your walkthroughs anyway.
Absolutely.
I don't know how...
I don't know what that percentage is.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, man. We don't know whether that's good or bad, just looking at that pie chart.
Correct. Correct. And Ms. White and I have had this, we revisit this almost monthly to look at where we are and to see any fluctuations and changes and to talk about those kind of things and what we see in those moments. Do some of those moments provide opportunity? Absolutely. And I make notes of that, of ways we can encourage teachers to make some adjustments in that arena.
We're tracking data as links to lesson plan writing, so are we guaranteeing that every lesson plan has technology incorporated in at some point in time, or...
Well, it's part of the process, so it's like what Ms. Dixon said, is if it's relevant to the activity at hand, and we try to really work with our curriculum coaches and our curriculum technology facilitators, becoming partners in that, so that, you know, the ITs have a strong background in the technology, but they don't have the standards, but where the coach knows the standards. So, we're trying to bridge them, and they're doing a wonderful job of it. They're collaborating, I think, more than, like, we've seen them through the past. And just to talk about, we had the conversation about the no technology use percentage by asking the faculty question, what do we expect in a one-to-one situation? And, you know, that's what we started talking about. We need to get out in the region and the state and find out what this estate or other places that are one-to-one, do they even have this data? Can we share that this is how we're collecting the data and encourage others to do the same? So, right now, it's developing a lot of questions for us, but a lot of excited too.
And I'm not sure how many folks are collecting this form of data with the rigor and relevance piece. I'm going to be very honest about that, because I've got a lot of friends in the field, and nobody's had this conversation yet. So, I'm sort of excited about that piece of it.
Substitution, I was going to say my last one. Substitution seems awful high, like we're just using it to replace paper rather than...
So, the question surrounding that becomes, is that the most cost-efficient way? Because a document camera used to replace an overhead projector sounds like a bad idea until you try to go buy an overhead projector. And so, I think, looking at that decision-making, I think it definitely allows us some opportunities to ask a lot of questions at budget time. I think those questions need to be centered around, what is the appropriate tool? Are we getting multi-use tools?
I guess, but a document camera, basically, is not real. I wouldn't consider that technology. I would consider that, basically, the old school method, just updated. Having it from all the kids' iPads in front of them like we have here would be the most cost-effective, being that we're one-to-one. We should be able to make those, I guess, kind of leaps in technology.
Substitution has its place, because that would be a replacement for worksheets.
Yes. And we have talked about that, that we do have many, many, many classrooms that have adopted Google Classroom and have cut down their paper. We have many classrooms that have gone paperless, because they actually turn out their assignments and bring them back in in that fashion. And that's some of what you see there. Okay? Other questions?
I'm just looking at the PE teacher out there, Ms. Randolph, and I hope she doesn't have any technology in the PE class, and they're getting all that wild energy.
You would be surprised. Actually, you would be surprised. I've got some tricks up my sleeve for the PE teachers coming up, and I'm just saying, release those yet. Okay?
Okay. All right. Are you back in the saddle again, or are we...
I'm back.
Okay, you're back.
I missed you, what can I say? So, we started the year off a little rough with yet another hurricane, so it kind of sidetracked us from getting our County Teacher of the Year and the Teacher's Voice up and running, but we are back on track, and it's go time. So, we begin with a presentation. Each year, the Brunswick County Schools Honored Educator Scholar, AKA the County Teacher of the Year, is able to attend a North Carolina Center for the Advancement of Teaching program of their choice. The scholarship covers all costs, like materials for the program, food, and lodging, travel. All they have to do is pick out which program that they want to attend, and then they get to go attend it. So, without further ado, let me go ahead and get Mr. Garza, our Brunswick County Schools' Teacher of the Year, up here to join us. Mr. Garza? Speaking of PE teachers, PE teacher extraordinaire. Justin, if you'll take that. So, on behalf of Brunswick County Schools and Inc., congratulations. And once you have completed the program, you have to come back and tell us what you learned and tell us all about it. And while we're here, I figure it would be a good time for us to just move right into the Teacher's Voice, the first of the year. Mr. Garza, take it up.
Promise to be brief. It's nice seeing some of y'all and not have to ask you an athletic question. That's nice. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. The last few months, I do appreciate the kind words, words of encouragement. I appreciate our high school Teacher of the Year, Ms. Osborne, being here and support. And thank you for the opportunity to use this teacher scholarship to enrich my teaching practices. Beginning of the year, at convocation, speeches by Dr. Oates and Michael Bonner sincerely inspired me and gave me some perspective on how I wanted to approach this year as a teacher leader. That's been a hot question for me that's been asked. What is a teacher leader? What are you going to do in our county as a teacher leader? And as I look at my roles as a teacher, as a coach, as an athletic director, I truly think that if you're an effective leader, you serve. And we're all in this room tonight because we ultimately want to serve our students to the best of our abilities. So, with that being said, that direction kind of gave me some motivation to what I would do with TAC, our Teacher Advisory Council. And if we're trying to think of, you know, Dr. Oates really expressed fire been doing, trying to alter the way we think, I wanted to make sure that I did that with TAC. And with that being said, I wanted to really focus on students, going back to serving. We serve our students. So, my perspective that I presented to TAC was trying to find a way to bridge that gap between students, teachers, and administration. Ultimately, TAC, we want to establish and more importantly, sustain our student voice in each school. And with that being said, it's going to look different from an elementary school to a high school, but we want to make sure that our students are being heard, because at the end of the day, when we go home, we're here to serve our students. How we're doing that requires a few steps. What we're first trying to do is create some sort of student cohort, whether it's a student advisory council, a panel at each school. And then with that, we are trying to collect student feedback, whether it's done through surveys, polls. A lot of administrations throughout our county will do like a student survey to kind of get some data on how our students are feeling at each school. We've taken that as well. Once we get that data, analyze that data, and try to find a way where we can work together and collaborate with students, teachers, and administration. And that's kind of where we are with TAC right now. I am a complete advocate of teacher voice. I think it's important that teachers have a voice. Teachers are being heard, but I also think that students should be heard as well, and that's where we are right now. Specifically, at South Brunswick Middle School, we created a Student Advisory Council beginning of September. We've had three advisory council meetings. Our last meeting was on October 29th, and that was with Mr. Ruth. Throughout that process, our students have come up with what they feel like are important topics to them. Mr. Ruth heard those topics, and now we're the process where we're actually collaborating and trying to problem-solve those topics that are important to our students. I think the biggest insight for me throughout this process is seeing how much our administration is taking in the feedback that our students are giving us. It's been a really good opportunity for them to kind of see a different perspective on what their school needs, rather than just hearing our teachers, but also hearing our students. And I look forward to just kind of filling you in and following up throughout the school year and where we are with that. I plan to take what I've learned with my experiences so far and share this through our TAC meetings and hopefully find a way that we can sustain a student voice throughout our school. And that's all I have. Are there any questions about that? Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. We'll move on to approval of the meeting agenda. Are there any changes that need to be made? If not, do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Miller, do I have a second?
Second.
And Mr. Benton, all in favor? Any opposed? All right. Next, we have the approval of the minutes from October 1st. A special call budget work session, October 1st, regular meeting. October 22nd, Operations Committee, and October 22nd, Curriculum Policy Committee.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as stated.
All right. Ms. Milligan, make a motion. Do I have a second?
All right.
Mr. Lemon, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? All right. We have consent items for approval. We have Therapy Works Speech Services Agreement. We have a Contact to Lefave Construction, a FASIA and SOFAT Replacement. A Policy Review, we have Policy 1320, 3560, Title I, Parent-Family Engagement. And then number four, we have several other policies, waiving the second reading. And number five, Policies on Second Reading. Have a motion for approval of the consent items.
Same.
Mr. Miller, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Milligan, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? All right. Move on to, we have no items, action items for approval, so we'll move on to discussion. We have the NCSB Conference that's coming up in Greensboro. I think Ms. Milligan will be attending. I don't know if anyone else is going to be attending, but Ms. Milligan will be representing us there. The Committee Means for November will be on the 19th at 2:00. And then, the second redistricting public information session will be on November the 18th at North Brunswick High School at 6:00 PM. And at this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Rutledge if she'll just make a few comments about some redistricting things that are going on.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Dr. Oates is an advocate, so I just wanted to give a quick update. The consultant has been working. We have been working too to establish the capacity numbers that were given to the consultant.
Given that we have added all to Lincoln Elementary and now Pre-City Elementary. So, I just wanted to give a few numbers to kind of think with all. Now, Pre-City, these capacity numbers also include the reductions that were mandated by the State House Bill of 14. So, before the addition, the capacity was 629. After the addition, the capacity is now 785. At Lincoln, it was 644. It's now 800. And I'll also note, there's plenty of required cafeteria space, circulation space, and media space to accommodate these one-to-one students. At Belleville, which has, right now, has nine modules, I believe. Module capacity is not included in this number, is 716. And so, today, the enrollment at Belleville is roughly 860. The current enrollment at Lincoln is around 600. The current enrollment at Haverick is around 590. One of the guiding principles in looking at redistricting were the capacity guidelines, 600 for elementary, 750 for middle, 1400 for high school. So, we're going to be, it looks like, we're going to be in good shape there with the capacity that we have, that we've added. So, the thing with adding that space and capacity is making sure that we can handle children, not poor choice words, that we can manage kids on the campus in case of emergency and arrival and dislocation. Right now, at Belleville, we've got a lot of kids in modular units. And with the additional capacity, as we balance enrollment at schools, these kids will be inside the building. And so, that's going to be great for our district. And right now, the enrollment number... They will have the options and spread around the cafeteria, and they'll have enough staff there for them to be able to take questions, take comments, and answer questions and have discussion. There's an online form that's posted that the public can use to, like, take their time, fill out that questionnaire, and I give you information through the district internet at Thursday.
Website.
And that's all I have. If I have any questions.
So, our guiding principle will still be to maintain maximum usage of our facility. The number you put forth there, that proper recommendation is, obviously, we recommend we'd love to have that, 600 at school, but our job is still to build buildings we have, correct?
Yes, I mean, yeah.
Safely built.
Yes. And all those buildings have access, you know, circulation space, too, so we're looking pretty good.
All right. Thank you. All right. If there's no further discussion or comments, then...
Let me ask a question. I need to know, committee meetings on the 19th with the Tuesday, and Ms. Milligan will be gone, and I don't know if any of the other members may end up going to that conference. Is it possible to consider Thursday, the 21st, for that meeting? I just furthered that out, so we can consider that, since it's in conflict with the student meeting.
With the conference. Let me...
Ms. White, Ms. White has something.
I was just, I was just saying, I have many, many items on that agenda, and will be at the fall instructional symposium on 21st, so I can move my items to December, if you can do that, but...
No, I was just raising a possibility.
Okay. Come on, just check on it, and then we can get back, and just check schedules and get back with it before, if that's okay. All right.
Ms. Milligan can drive from Greensboro, that's the meeting.
We could Skype her in, you know.
I have my shoulder for her hand.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
We'll get the sheriff's department helicopter.
Yeah.
All right. There being no further discussion, have a motion to go into closed session?
Motion to go to closed session.
Mr. Benton, I have a second.
Second.
Mr. Miller, all in favor?
All right.
Okay. We will go into closed session.